...intimation. This is two property owners removed from a situation which really, I was at the county at the time around 2006 and they say trust but verify. Well, we trust, but there was no verification process. So when building permit came in to build the main house, they said they were going to convert the guest house to 600 square feet. That never happened. The property was sold. The property was sold again. The property owner was doing vacation rentals, which at the time was not regulated. And when the county came in with vacation rental regulations, this rose to the surface and began an extensive process towards bringing in compliance. But that criteria of this was not of the applicant's maintenance. That was loud and clear. In fact, I think the county has some, you know, you've stepped up your game over the years and I think there's a follow-up process in compliance and I applaud you for it. But it's very frustrating. There are a lot of these all over the county, I promise. They just haven't risen to the surface yet. And so I think you're going to see this kind of thing. The other thing I wanted to point out is that APU ordinance, the 900 square feet, it may not be the perfect number. It may be a little bit arbitrary and that's okay. Like sometimes in planning, you have to draw a line somewhere. But one of the things that we can learn as we go and if you see, okay, a lot of people are needing variances because this happened and we need to either tear down all these buildings, not go over well. And it's tremendously wasteful. Or we need to maybe change our standards in the future. Maybe 1,200 square feet is the right number for an APU. I don't know. I don't think there's any magic about the 900. I do know that one of the things that planning commission brought up very wisely was that this had three bedrooms. And so with that placement of the condition on there, condition four, to limit this to two bedrooms, I think is very consistent. This become compliant would have to go through the permit process. So there is no detriment to public health and handle health would be consulted and this property could finally be brought into compliance. I guess that's really the primary message I wanted to convey, but I do want to turn it over to Josh a little bit just to talk about the property, the circumstances, where we are with the property owner and also how it can manage. I think some of the comments that we've seen out there were a little bit, there's misunderstandings with the surrounding property. We do not want to cause any problems with the surrounding property. So Josh?
Sure. Okay. Josh, I'm in Home Town Property Management. I've been the property manager for this property since the owner purchased in 2015. So I've been at that property a lot for the last five years. I personally check in and out every single guest that ever comes onto that property. I've had great relationships with the surrounding neighbors, McDonald's, the roads right to the west, and the property owner who's sold recently. Throughout the entire time, I've had zero phone calls from anybody regarding the conduct of the vacation rituals at the property. I think that's a totally separate issue, but since I wasn't, I wasn't here the first time, I didn't have a chance to kind of look at things that were brought up that were not entirely true. So the property owners have been amazing. They've done work to that road on their own, all on their own to make sure that the surrounding neighbors were, that they knew that they were cognizant of the neighborhood. So having said all of that, I mean, I'm happy to, if somebody had heard something out by conservancy to it. Moving beyond that, I do want to let you guys know that the property is currently under contract to be sold. And the current buyers have expressed they are not interested in ensuring that we can keep it up in addition. So if that concern is legitimate to you guys, just wanted to let you know that that's going to be going away. And in fact, I've already been instructed to pull off the vacation rental sites. As far as the use and the conduct and all that kind of stuff goes, I
When you stand and laugh and speak your hand and you got three minutes.
Good afternoon, Steve Commissioners. My name is Randy McLean. I wanted to write one of the letters. I live at 46 Campbell Point. About four, three full houses down from the property in question. I just want to just go over a couple of things about the, about the letter that I wrote. Verify my things, my issues. One is, is I question, why did they deserve an exception when this would never be allowed in the construction? Now, you know, they're talking about, well, it wasn't, the property owners didn't do it, it wasn't their fault, yet they purchased it. Apparently they didn't research whether or not the property was going to open or not. That was their responsibility when they purchased it, part of the purchase. A planning department review originally stated that where many other properties in this area with similar sized dwellings, which is not accurate. Not aware of any other properties in this area that have a 5,000 square foot main home with two accessory dwelling units that violate the water gas revise code. While there's a few properties in here that have been used, I doubt any of them exceed code limitations in that kind of fee. Most of those are not in second construction. This property is an exception to all the other properties in our area that I'm aware of. I would very understandably comply with ban help district requirements regarding the system, septic system. For me, that's a big part of this. You know, it is not in compliance with the septic system and that's why I believe that it does violate now the Bonner County Rise Code Title 12 2.3c. Because the property is potentially detrimental to the public health safety and welfare by allowing, so this charge you under the Eiffel and the Palmory River from an overused septic system because of the number of people that they're allowing to have to property at one time. So, you know, I would actually maybe be, have a slightly different opinion on this. If they would have taken some steps when they purchased the property to resolve that issue. Instead, they chose not to for five years. So one of the issues that
You better add that to your case.
Yeah, just a moment here. One of the issues that they're represented as mentioned, of the applicants, that it wasn't their responsibility that this happened. And that's why they requested the variance. But that also is not a criteria in the Bonner County Rise Code to allow.
Hi, thank you for allowing this time. My name is Mary Ann Dino. I live two properties to the west of the said property. I have been here since the year 2001, May the house was built. I am familiar with the original orders and when they originally required or tried to achieve a septic permit, they stated they would take out the kitchen and any of the water systems in the, in the now second guest house. That was not done. We still have a full kitchen. There's bathrooms, two bathrooms there, three bedrooms. And there are sleeping quarters above what is now called the carriage house, along with a bathroom up there. That totally completely exceeds the number of bedrooms allowed from this current septic system. And that is actually one of my major concerns because we do have a west, just to the west of this set of property. I have to agree with Josh that the people that have been there have been very good, but again, that is a slight point at this point since we may not be doing a VRBO. We have had large quantities of people above 20, which I believe the VRBO is the limitation of without an extra unit permit. I also would like to say that Vista is not the supplier for the electrical system. It is Northern Lights. And when this property was initially developed, Northern Lights had to come in and do get the variance on their main feeder line that supplies the south side of the Palmory River. This house has been beset with variances. And as a neighbor, it is rather difficult to see continual variances, including when the boat wouldn't fit in the carriage house. They put a little lean to that is now within five feet of the property line. So as a whole, I would like the commissioners to see that, yes, variance are granted oftentimes, but we keep making variances. And it seems it's a little excessive. And I agree with Randy that none of the other homes in the area even come close to this type of dwelling, nor do they have secondary homes on. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? No one? Commissioners have any questions for the, for anybody?
Sound fine. No questions. We had, in compliance with NAML health, that's not all we can do, correct?
We have no jurisdiction or, so that's all, but can handle, yes.
But they agreed, it's been noted, that there, there have been alerts to that. The other thing is, is I don't know if Milton or we can answer the question is that if you took this parcel and you wrote it down, and I think that's what somebody was alluding to, is that you could do a subdivision on the area. I think you could still come in compliance and
It would require a variance to the lot size minimum. And that, based off of the services that are available, it would be a much incremental to allow the larger hall.
In compliance and it seems pretty realistic to just do it. Right, because you add more structure to the property.
I think we might have a couple of them.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes, we got a hand raised. I can't see the name. Was it S. Dimick? Can you, are we on? I don't think this is on.
It is.
It is?
Should be.
I know, but it wasn't working earlier, so.
Okay. Can you, can you hear us out there in TB land?
At the moment, yes. It's, it's been off and back on periodically, but I heard bits and pieces of the conversation. And I'm now able to hear you and it sounds like you can hear me.
Yes.
My name is Susan Dimick. I'm a neighboring property owner in the Campbell Point Property Owners Association and actually the president of that association. I wrote a very detailed letter for the first hearing on this particular issue. And I'm wondering if you, as the county commissioners, have access
We wouldn't carry anything over from that.
So at this point, would it be appropriate for me to share the concerns that I voiced during the first hearing?
Sure.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm going to pull it up and read that letter to you. Just a moment, please. I'm here, I'm here. As a neighboring property owner to the property that's referenced, I am significantly concerned that a variance is even being considered. I have a very lengthy list of concerns about this property, but I really just want to stay focused on the specific issues related to almost doubling the allowed square footage restrictions for accessory dwelling units in this residential area.
Okay. You're going to, you're going to have to start over. Right when you were beginning, starting to begin, we lost you.
You lost? Okay, okay. Well, basically, my name is Susan Dimick. I'm a neighboring property owner to the property referenced in this file. I'm four lots away and I'm significantly concerned that a variance is even being considered. I have a number of concerns about this property, but I'm going to try to just stay focused on the specific issues related to almost doubling allowed square footage restrictions for accessory dwelling units in this residential neighborhood. If this application for variance refers to the existing original dwelling on this parcel, it is in fact the original home now being used as a guest house and a vacation rental by owner VRBO. I've looked up the site at the VRBO and I'm just going to summarize here. It advertised that it can sleep 22 people. The ADU is listed as a well-appointed nine-room, 1,700 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath guest house, which I understand you've already gone through here. I think it's important to note that the septic permit, SP 03-09-9490, which was issued in June of 2003 through Panhandle Health District, states that the septic system was sized for a 3,500 square foot, single-family residence with four bedrooms and four baths. That is very clearly a significant misrepresentation. Further, the existing ADU not only exceeds permitted square footage, but it also exceeds the allowed number of bedrooms for an ADU per Bonner County land use regulations. Even more concerning is the standard, standard B, which is 12-490, which requires that an adequate water supply and sewage disposal method approved by Panhandle Health District or the state of Idaho should be provided. Adequate is the key word here. Is existing septic approval for a single-family residence of a modest size actually adequate for a property which has six plus bedrooms and accommodates 22 people? To those in the neighboring parcels, this property is already a nuisance. It disrupts the very peaceful nature of our residential community. It is, does not appear that there are unique conditions which would apply to this property and would not apply to other properties in this area. Yet it does appear that granting the variance would be detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, or materially injurious properties in the vicinity. I respectfully request that you deny this variance and further investigate removing the existing ADU structure entirely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we make sure that she can hear? Because she must not have heard about the septic as we talked about the septic several times.
Plus the bedroom.
Yeah, the bedroom. We talked about the bedroom as well. I think she had disadvantage not hearing the previous presentation. Okay, now we're going to officially close. Public comment. Questions for staff or actually anybody at this point?
So the size of that lot?
Robo. Yes, Robo. Staff have a rebuttal? Do you have a rebuttal?
I'm not sure that we want to entertain a bunch of discussion about vacation rentals. I truly believe that's off
No, that's off table.
And I'm not sure, I mean, if you have something to offer other than vacation rentals, discussion. I don't think that any of that is up for discussion.
Yes, not relevant. Keep it to the actual, the actual.
There's one thing that we alluded to, I think twice, that I just want to clear up for everybody. They talk about carriage house, that's a four-car detached garage. There is a space up above that has a carpet and finished wall. The owners have never used that ever for any kind of dwelling purposes, for storage. So I'm not sure where that information is coming from. Just to be clear, that, that's not a building that has ever been used. At least for the last five years, as something under storage.
I just have a quick point I want to, I want to make, and that's regarding the septic conversation. The guest house, at the time what was proposed and current, that was issued in 2005, was for a 600 square feet house. And that was, that was concurrent with the with the large main house being constructed. So Panhandle Health District signed off on this for, for up to 600 square feet. It may not be adequate for 900, but we would actually be doing a new permit to bring this into compliance. And we would be bringing that into compliance. So anything regarding the septic is actually, I think to the advantage of water quality, is actually move forward.
All right. Any others, guys? You have any other questions?
I mean, I just have a couple of other comments more than you know, it's existing for 15 years. It's hard for me to believe that suddenly this has an impact. It's detrimental to the whole neighborhood. That, that, that just really, unless the whole neighborhood has changed who is there or it's grown or something like that, I don't see what the difference is. And to even think about tearing down a building that's been there for 15 years and nobody seemed to have a problem with it before now is ludicrous.
Milton, a question. From Milton, the size of the slot compared to the others. He could actually divide that into three pieces.
Well, that's what I just said.
Yeah, then he could add, so to do four more. How is it?
Not quite.
Well, even if that ADU only needs one.
Correct. Even if you split it in half, he would, even if they split it in half, it'd be, it'd be allowed two single-family dwellings, two ADUs, one on each one. Plus a 35% block coverage, which if, if we went there, I mean, that's almost 20,000 square feet. So, so he's, he's underneath that 35% block coverage.
It's the only option that makes sense.
Well, I think when you look at the other parcels, some of these other parcels around here, there are smaller parcels that have a lot, some of them have quite a good coverage. There's a lot, there's several good sites on them. That area really lies, in my opinion. Any other questions? Kind of deliberating at the same time. Sorry, public comment is closed.
It just doesn't make sense to bring it into compliance.
Right. Yeah, it'd be one thing if this was a new construction project, you might look at it a little differently with this property, these equipment, these buildings have been there for, for a number of years and as long as Panhandle Health can get the septic worked out, I certainly don't have an issue with it. It's really, you know, why I can't tell them to tear a building down. It's only me that
If this was a new construction, I'm not sure I would be even inclined to, to talk about it because it seems right now with the ADU and we've got a set value of that.
And that is one of the standards, commissioners, that, that, that this is not created by the owner. And this wasn't.
And that's the other factor.
It's unfortunate that it wasn't followed to the letter of the law, but it's, I mean, you're talking about nitpicking to a point of about 600 square feet or 700 square feet. Well, if we held all the new property owners accountable for previous property ownerships, that would be a, that would be a full-time job.
Well, I think the upside of this too is they're actually wanting to bring it into compliance. You've seen several of these people finally say, hey, we want to do this and we don't want to be the ones to punish it for trying to do it.
So the funny part is, is if they wouldn't have come forward with this at all, then this wouldn't have been an issue because I mean, it's already been there. But because of the vacation rental, that kicked the, kicked the can over and then
Yeah, and it's good to see the vacation rental program's working. Okay, well, that, that will then close the duration and I will entertain a motion.
All right, I move to approve this project file B 0010-20. Divisional variance is allowed for a 1,676 square foot accessory dwelling unit where 900 square feet is required. Planning is, is in a form upon a county revise, publish, enumerate, and the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted. Up to the time the staff report was prepared, testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the following finding with facts and conclusions of law as written or as amended. This action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval. As adopted, this action does not result in taking a private property.
And I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All of the papers say aye. Aye. Aye, motion passes. And that will conclude this hearing. We'll go ahead and adjourn it. Was it 214? You want?